Report on the status of several conceptual economic development initiatives in preparation for the upcoming fiscal year 2020-2021 budget cycle. Gabe?
Sir, I'm Mayor and Council. This is the follow-up item that we want to bring back to you with some recommendations that if you so direct staff, we will proceed with incorporating this into our roll-up budget that you will then take into consideration for full adoption beginning in June. And making the presentation is my senior management analyst on Trevin. Go ahead.
Thank you, Gabe, for the introduction. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to be here. As Gabe said, I'll be updating you on a few of our economic development initiatives. Just to give provided background and summary, economic development is very important to the council. They've made that clear in several different public meetings. There's an effort to prepare for the fiscal cliff, enhance revenues from economic development, enhance customer service, and revitalize downtown. And council has expressed an interest in expanding the city's role in these type of programs in the strategic plan. And council also wanted to provide direction to staff to report back on our economic development initiatives so that when you're making budget decisions for the city in a few months, you'll have a holistic perspective. There's three activities that we'll discuss primarily tonight. There's the downtown facade pilot program, conceptual commercial corridor development incentive, and downtown parking. To start, the facade program, just a brief background, the concept was introduced on November 26th at the Economic Development Special Planning Session. And what was given to you was a very broad, very general description of what a facade improvement program was, what a facade was, why you'd want to enhance it, the general benefit a city would get out of it, and the general benefit the public would get out of it. And council asked to come back with an idea of how much the city could get from different ranges of investments, and asked us to narrow the scope of the program based on their feedback. And so from that, city staff are now proposing two different options for a potential pilot program. Just the general details for both of those two options, the goal would still be the same. It would be to help enhance businesses' exteriors in the downtown. The city would set aside funds for businesses and property owners to apply for those funds, and applications would be evaluated based on a competitive basis. For option one, for a facade pilot program, it would be focused primarily on small features to the facade, to the front of the building, to the exterior of the building facing the street. And that would be improvements such as paint, maybe small murals, signs, awnings, things of that nature to improve anything that is maybe a maintenance issue or maybe a little bit out of disarray. And likely, these type of improvements would be exempt from environmental and historical review. And staff is anticipating that property owners or businesses would be spending approximately $10,000 on this type of improvement, and perhaps we'd match that one-to-one, so giving a max of $5,000 per applicant. And so there would be an appropriation of approximately $50,000, and that would help offset the cost of 10 different facades at minimum. Businesses might not take up the full 5,000. Maybe they're only planning to spend 8,000, and they would come to the city for 4,000. That would free up money to improve more facades over 10. So that's the first option. The second option for the downtown facade program focuses on complete reconstruction of facades. And under this is the main concept that was also explored in the previous study session. And what the city envisioned is that we would take on the SEQA and EIR, as well as the architectural review of those types of reconstructions. And the reason why the city wanted to do that is because it would have been too burdensome for an individual business owner. An EIR is approximately $50,000, and when you include the special historical reviews that you'd have to do, it'd increase the cost even more. So the city's concept was for us to take on that burden, to free up individuals, to allow them to spend their money on the actual facade improvement, to actually see results, and to help in that manner. We anticipated a one-to-one match of up to 40,000, so businesses would be spending about $80,000 to $100,000 on their reconstruction effort. And this would require an appropriation of approximately $500,000, with 100,000 of that dedicated towards the SEQA, EIR, historical review, and architectural. So another aspect of this plan was that we would use an architect to create standardized plans in order to help further with the SEQA and EIR. So that was the facade program. Next is the conceptual commercial corridor development incentive. And council previously expressed an interest in developing an incentive program, and so this is what staff came up with. Council could provide a 75% reduction of processing fees. These are different than the impact fees. These are the fees that we use in our cost recovery for staff time. And so the fee would be reduced by 75%, which we anticipate would provide $5,000 to $20,000 in savings for a property owner or business owner's construction efforts. And this would be a new building development incentive targeted to construction in downtown to further make progress towards the goal of revitalizing downtown. Eligible projects would be pretty broad, and it would include new commercial construction, interior tenant improvements, facade improvements, ADA improvements, improvements to city streets, utilities, sidewalks. So if someone was completely redoing their facade or the front of their building or making a reconstruction effort, even for the rest of their building, like let's say they wanted to put in a new restaurant in a vacant building, they would need to do all these things. They would have to also maybe improve the sidewalk to include sidewalk seating or to maybe create a bulb out for extra seating. And so we would cover the engineering fees of that, or at least 75% of it. This fee reduction could increase to 100%, say for if you wanted to have the applicants meet special criteria. This could be remodeling very old buildings, 40-plus-year-old buildings that have with it a higher barrier to reconstruction. There's a lot more effort that needs to be involved. Or remodeling of buildings vacant for 180 days. So this would help with the city's absorption rate to make sure that there's more turnover and increasing value in downtown. Or the last one would be remodeling of buildings for nonprofit use. Fee reduction would apply to building, planning, and engineering fees, according to the Gilroy's master fee schedule. And the financial impacts consist of loss of revenue for offsetting staff costs. To give you a visual example of what this would look like, sorry, it's hard to see. The bottom line there is $13,667, and that would be the total savings from this type of program if an applicant received a 75% reduction on their fees. As you can see, this is actually a real-life example that we applied the fee waiver towards. Just to give an example, so this is the Golden State Brewery project. This is the actual fees that they paid. And so we looked back and said, okay, well, if we had this type of program, if we had a fee reduction program, what would that look like for the business owner and the property owner? And so this gives you a very good visual of that. You see that they played the planning fees for minor modification, downtown use permit and assign permit fee, which came out to $1,000. And the rest of the chart follows under similar formats. So you've got the building fees, fire prevention fees, and then the mechanical and engineering fees for a total payment of $18,000. If you reduce that by 75%, the bill would have come down to approximately $4,500, and which would have given them a savings of $13,667. And so for downtown parking, the third, yes, of course.
Can I follow up with that? This is an example of what would have happened. We didn't give this incentive yet to the brewery.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. We just wanted tangible, this is what the fee schedule, how it would have applied to a business, so that we could project forward. Yeah, of course.
Sorry, I couldn't find it in the staff report. Did I hear you mention something about nonprofits?
Yes.
A while ago, what was that?
So for, yeah, of course.
Is it in the report somewhere?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's under the special criteria for increasing, yeah, increasing the reduction to 100%. So there's three different items that were considered for what you might want to consider for.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So downtown parking, in the last study session, we talked extensively about what could be done to improve parking conditions in downtown.
There it is.
The city provided several different sites, one of them being the property behind the art center. Staff estimated that if turned into an open-air parking lot, would produce about 220 parking spaces. Since that time, the city has drafted a preliminary CIP charter in order to get a better understanding of the costs and the effort involved. Again, that was just preliminary so that we could filter the cost better and get a better picture of it. The preliminary CIP charter estimates about a cost of $1.5 to $2 million, being closer to the $2 million side of it. And also discussed in our last meeting was the putting in solar on top of the property. And solar could be an option. Right now, Silicon Valley Clean Energy does not have a program to develop it for us, but they do have a program called the S-FIT, which is basically their parallel tariff to the RS BCT program from PG&E and the CPUC. Of course.
I had a quick question with regard to the parking spaces that are the 220. So there's parking now that's already kind of off to the side. I guess it's just south of the art center. So the envisioned parking would be to the west of the art center where the demonstration garden is, is that correct?
That's correct. It's the undeveloped portion.
Got it. Okay, the undeveloped portion there.
Yep.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. And that did bring up another point about the part of background is the current demonstration garden is there. Since we've had that meeting, staff and Gabe specifically have reached out to the demonstration garden, and they're open, if not receptive, to the idea of moving to Christmas Hill Park. And they actually thought that it would be a good idea. So just to cover the bases on that question, too.
And for those who may not know, that land is already owned by the city, right? We own that land, so the cost you're talking about is just for the parking lot, just to create a parking lot, not to acquire the land.
That's correct. The costs of $1.5 to $2 million also don't include the cost of a solar system. The solar system would be separate. For the solar system, there would be a couple of different options, though. We might not even have to use our capital cash to invest in a solar. Solar companies are very sophisticated in understanding the cost of capital and usually provide a power purchase agreement where they would upfront the cash capital, and then we would just purchase the energy from them through a power purchase agreement per kilowatt hour. So that's also not, hasn't been estimated in terms of total cost. So the options are there for solar. The next step for solar, though, would be a feasibility study so we can understand if we were going to do the RS BCT program, which would allow us to use that site's energy production to offset all of the rest of the city's bills, all the other meters that we have. If we were to do that, we would need a feasibility study to understand the city's load so that we can right-size that development or make sure that it is a large enough space to offset the rest of our load. So the council direction on these three items is desired is for the downtown facade pilot program would be to proceed with facilitating option one, which would be the minor improvements. And for the downtown commercial corridor incentive, that would be proceed a new processing fee reduction pilot program, and we can come back with more research and analysis on how that could unfold in the future. And for parking would be to come back to council at a later date to discuss how that may or may not be included in the next year's budget. I want to reiterate that the downtown facade pilot program and the downtown commercial corridor incentive programs would be pilot programs. They would be for one year. This would allow us to allow staff and council to see the results of what happens if we were to do that, how many people would apply, specifically for the downtown commercial corridor incentive where we don't necessarily have a budget that we're limited to, like the facade program would be limited by budget. For the downtown commercial corridor incentive program, it'd be, it's harder to estimate how many people would utilize that in advance. So putting a one-year pilot program in place would definitely help staff and city council understand what the benefits and costs would be to do something like that going forward.
Thank you. I understand that the Downtown Business Association did a parking lot study, and I'm sure they'll speak to that. But my question is, did you have a copy? And have you, I don't remember getting a copy of that.
Gabe?
So was it sent to the city? It sounds like it was sent to the city in November.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, Councilmember Tucker, they did send it, and they have met with my Public Works Director and City Engineer on that. They have had, I think, one meeting as a result of that, but it's a draft, I believe, so we can, we can still send it to you, but we have met with Downtown Business Association on it.
I mean, it just seems like a study worth looking into in conjunction with what staff is doing before we make a decision.
Yeah, and I think that they looked at the different opportunity sites. They looked at existing parking and some of the opportunity sites to identify in there. So we'll bring that. Like I said, I'll send it to council under a separate email to you.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz.
Thank you, and I apologize for coming in a few minutes late, so I might have missed this as you went through your presentation. But with regard to the downtown facade program and looking at the different options, how were you considering, if at all, outdoor dining furniture into the, into the plans? Because I don't know that I saw that.
Right. It would be, so it depends on the extent of the project, but for instance, you mean in the minor improvements?
Correct.
I don't think that staff considered furniture, so buying a chair as part of an improvement to a facade.
Okay. What about something along the lines where it's a more permanent kind of structure outside? So maybe, maybe something like a bulb out, you know, where I'm talking about, where it extends into the street a little bit and, you know, consumes a few of the parking spaces or more permanent areas on a sidewalk. Was that considered at all?
Right.
Yeah. Mayor and Council, Councilmember Peter Leroy Munoz. So we kept it to the aesthetics and the front of the building, if you will. Currently, under, when applicant comes in, like Golden State Brewery, they're the first business that came in with that proposed outdoor patio, and we worked with them as part of their design. So I, the way we were framing and bringing forward the facade program is just for that, to improve the visual effects of the front of the building, and that's why we're proposing more of, you know, kind of like a paint job, addressing the window dressing, some awnings, something to beautify the appearance of that. But in terms of how much money we had in the budget, it's very limited, $50,000.
Yeah.
You know, it's not a whole lot of money, and some of what you're describing, it's going to take up a lot more than that.
I can imagine it would be.
Yes. So that's the reason why we didn't explore that.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Marks.
I like what the staff has done with the facade program. I have a question. Would the business owner get the money upfront from the city? Like, say, for example, I'm going to open up a business, I want to do a facade grant. Would I get the $5,000 first, or would it be on completion, would be performance-based?
It'd be reimbursable.
Good, perfect.
With receipts and, yeah.
Excellent, okay. And would you put a time limit on it? So it wouldn't stagger over two years, but say maybe, you know, three months or four months they had to have this done in order to get the grant?
That's correct, yeah. There would be a shot clock. That's one of the best practices that even in city council or city of Gilroy's history, there was a fee waiver program in place in our, in our, in our past. Oh, sorry. So in city of Gilroy's past, there was a similar fee reduction program in the past, and that turned out to be one of the possible barriers to applicants, is that they would apply for the program and then not do anything with it. So what we want to see, especially a part of the recommendations from the GFOA in terms of our economic development activities, is we want to, if we give an incentive, we want to see measurable results. So that would be included as one of the ways that we can measure outcomes for a facade program.
Excellent. Okay, how long would you give them, do you think?
We haven't set a specific date. It'd be open to consideration. There would be a date.
Good.
And depending on which option council goes with, option one or two, that would change the timeline. Option one would have a smaller timeframe, six months to a year, probably. Option two might have a longer one because you're looking at reconstruction. So it could be one to two years.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions also, Trevin, but I want to open it up to the public first to see if, who wants to speak?
We have John Taft and then Mary Yates.
Could I just ask what GFOA stands for?
Government Finance Officers Association.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm here on behalf of the Downtown Association, Business Association. I got, I drew the short straw. Everybody else is out of town.
Yeah.
What I did today, when we went through the report that was submitted, and there's no way I can get through all of that in three minutes, so I thought what would be best is if I sent, I gave to each of you a two-page summary of our comments and recommendations. And I apologize to staff, I brought some extra, thinking I had brought extra, but they needed more, so I'll send you one soon tomorrow and get it to you. But let me, my order is a little bit different than the way you presented it here, but on the downtown parking, that parking study that we submitted to the city in November was final, so it wasn't a draft. That is our final, our final recommendations. And if you look at it, there's 863 parking spaces in downtown, and we have a shortage of approximately 622 parking spaces today, based on the current inventory of buildings and things that are in downtown. Excuse me. So the 220 is, we look at it as kind of a down payment on what the city downtown needs. We have a crisis in parking, as far as I'm concerned. It's to that stage, and we really need to move forward and do some things relative to the parking in downtown.
Can you just clarify, are you saying that we currently have 800 and something, and we need another 500, so a total of 1,300?
Yeah, if you look at the current building inventory and the ordinance requirements in terms of parking, if you were to apply that to the core, now this is just the core district, it's not the entire downtown, it's just from fourth to seventh.
If you were to apply that, we would have 863 spaces, is that what you're saying?
No, that's the actual.
Okay, I thought our report says that with our 220, we'd have 596.
That's because they only looked at the off-street parking owned by the city. What our analysis did was looked at private parking, parking on the street, and the parking lots. So they just took a smaller universe when they were looking at the calculations. I'm looking at the total that's available in downtown and what I think the total requirement is. And the number that we used with the 600 is a fairly conservative number. I mean, we didn't stretch it out, and it's actually in the low end of the range, which what a lot of the cities are using today downtown for downtown purposes. On the solar, my only other comment on parking is, I think that's a good idea. I appreciate the fact that it could really be of benefit to the city. I just would wish that we could look at doing that as a phase two. Personally, I want to continue to move the parking lot along and get it done, and then we can come back later and do the solar project. I don't want to get hung up in analysis and get paralyzed there. On the facade program, again, I think what was submitted is pretty good. We don't have a lot of complaints or recommendations. Number one, on the first option, we're good with that as it is, we did make a recommendation about possibly putting in some of the dining furniture. On number two, the way it was written, at least when I read the report, it was talking about a reconstruction of the building, and it seemed to go beyond just the front, street-facing facade. And I was just concerned about that because if I read it correctly, that's a much more significant project and cost than what I'm thinking of. You know, today with the URM buildings, for example, it's taking about $600,000 to $1 million to renovate most of those buildings up to what it requires to be able to open them up. You know, the facade programs should be substantially lower than that. So I hope I just misunderstood what was there as we, as we go forward. As far as, the other thing I was a little concerned about, I think if you looked a little bit harder at SEQA and the SEQA requirements, there are a number of exemptions that could be applied to these types of programs. You know, Gary and I looked at about 20 to 25 different facade programs for cities in California, none of them mentioned having to do a SEQA study or environmental impact report. There, I'm specifically looking at section 15301 and 15302. I think those are two potential areas you could explore. If you looked at it aggressively, you could exempt these, all of these projects, even the type-two projects, from SEQA. We would prefer it be a revolving loan program with as much money as we're talking about. I think it's fair to ask them to pay you back, maybe on extended terms or over time, and then we could recycle that money back to the next applicant in the future. I know you're looking at it as a one-year program. I'm hoping it's something we can do for more years than a single year. On the conceptual commercial corridor, again, we didn't really spend a lot of time on that. I liked what I saw. I think it's a good step for step. We, again, offer to participate in helping put that together and working with you in terms of what kind of incentives and incentive packages from the commercial perspective we think would work. So that's a good, good start. The two things that I would like to do is add to what you're analyzing. One is, and I've said this before 100 times, the development impact fees when we have redevelopment projects in downtown. Those are the numbers that are much more substantial than the fees and things you're talking about, and those are the numbers that really have an impact on whether a project pencils or not. And I'd like to take a look at that. It's the same old argument, we're going to do an infill impact fee, development impact fee versus a greenfield development impact fee. You know, we know of cities, and I can give you a list of cities that I know have already done this and have run and developed a fee schedule, an impact fee schedule for downtown versus greenfield, and they usually are substantially different. It costs more for you to put in a greenfield than it does to come back in and work in downtown. The other one, we've been working with Tammy on the opportunity zones, and I would really encourage the city to get on to this. We were down, a week or so ago, down in Salinas and attended a seminar that they held where they invited people in to talk about the opportunity zone. They went through the benefits of this and the ability to incentivize people to make investments in different areas. We're fortunate, we have two opportunities census tracts in Gilroy that are part of the opportunity zone. And so a lot of the cities are already putting together prospectuses. We've already been invited to go back down to Salinas. They're going to have their next meeting, they're going to have a tour of the various opportunity sites. So they're already starting to market this stuff out to the investors about coming down and investing into Salinas, done the same thing at Paso Robles. I mean, there's a whole bunch of cities that we're aware of. So I just would encourage you, we need to get on the boards here. We need to really step this up, and we need to put together the prospectus. Part of that prospectus is having what the city's going to offer in terms of incentive schedules, what they're going to offer in terms of the schedule, zoning ordinance changes and that types of things to streamline the process. What I'm concerned about under the new, this new tax law is you have 30 months from the day you acquire the property to double your investment, or you don't get any of the tax benefits. And if we take a long time putting the program together, we're going to, the investor's not going to achieve his objective. So you are an important part of that, and I really would like to help you to get, help us get this put together and move forward. And with that, that's what I've got.
Thank you. It's, we only have a couple of speakers, so I let you go ahead and have as much time as you need.
I know, I appreciate it. Actually, I was up here as three people, so I figured maybe I could get away with it a little bit.
There you go. All right, thank you.
Mary Yates.
John, come, come back on up here. Excuse me, Mary. We have a couple of.
I want to understand what you're saying. I couldn't listen to you and read this at the same time, so I'm sorry. That's okay, I didn't have it to read before.
Well, I was hoping you'd read that afterwards, and I would be spellbinding, but I doubt that.
Well, I could read it after, okay. So with respect to the parking, what is it you're, you saw what staff's report is suggesting for parking. What is it you're suggesting?
Actually, they're suggesting the same thing we did. We're, the first site that we said that's available that makes sense to put parking on is the street, you know, Eagleberry side of Sixth and Seventh. Makes a lot of sense to us to convert that into parking now. As the staff knows, we recommended that we look at that for, part of that for the merchant parking program. We want to start to designate an area where the merchants park so that we can relocate them out of the downtown parking area to over there to free up more space for the core customers in downtown.
Okay, so, so you're in agreement with that being a start?
Right. The only thing that was different is that we looked at the totality of the parking. And I said, there's three elements to parking downtown. There's private parking, off-street parking, there's public off-street parking, and there's the on-street parking itself. Our study, we looked at all three of those, brought them together, and looked at what the requirement for parking was down in the downtown core. We just had a bigger view than, I mean, he was looking, and I think Gabe was just trying to tell you, hey, we're really increasing the city parking lots. That's what he was trying to say. I got it.
Okay, I need to, I'll look at that because I don't have that to be able to converse.
And like I said, our report is final, so when Gabe sent, I thought Gabe had already sent it to you. sent it to you.
No, we haven't seen it. Okay, so I understand that parking lot, then you had a comment about the cost. So city, staff is telling us seven thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars per parking space, exclusive of land. You have reason to know that it should be less than that?
Well, just, those of us who've been around and built things, it just seems like there's, ought to be a way to try to engineer that cost down. I haven't seen what they've estimated, I don't know how they got there.
Okay.
It just feels high, Gary thinks it's high, and I'm just, you know, I'm just--
Well, I think it's high, but I think everything's high that comes from here, so, okay, it's good to know, I just wondered if you had something concrete that I could nail them on or something.
(laughter)
Guess not.
We've had a couple of guys give us some estimates, but we'll leave it at that.
Okay, so that's it on the parking. Then on the facade program, I heard, I understood you to say you're in agreement, or you're in favor of pursuing, of moving forward with looking into Option One?
Option One, I think is one, I mean, I actually look at both programs, I think having a small program?
I know, I'm trying to get to just specifics.
In the small one, in the Option One, we said we're in total agreement with that, we're not recommending anything other than we slipped in the furniture.
Okay, and what I heard you to say about Option Two was to include, you thought impact fees should have been included?
That's a different issue.
Okay.
What I said on the first one is, my understanding of the facade program, it was for it to be the street front, street--
Right, not the interior.
But the way I read it, I read it broader than that, and they talked about much higher construction costs. And if you're going to renovate a building that, you know, has got issues like the URM buildings, yeah, it's going to be a heck of a lot more money.
I understand, so then where did the impact fees come in?
Impact fees come down in terms of the incentive programs in the development--
The corridor?
The corridor.
Okay, got it.
They talked in their section of the study about the fees.
Right.
Permitting fees and that type of thing. I take a much broader look, I know from running numbers on projects that the big impact from the city are the impact fees.
I know, okay.
And there, I think, I mean, we've had this discussion before, should we have a special schedule for infill development versus greenfield? There are cities that break their impact fees into those two types of projects, because the cost structure and the implications to the city and development is significantly different.
You have answered my question, thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. I know, good evening, Mayor and Council. Mary Yates, I've lived here three, five years. So, parking, my issue is parking, as seems to be an issue for the DBA and the Council. First of all, I would like to say, I would like a copy of the DBA's final report on parking. There may be some things that I'm going to mention that they've mentioned in theirs that I'm going to mention tonight that I haven't seen come up in the comments from the, your staff, et cetera. So, I think, I don't know, are we talking about parking that is an everyday issue, are we talking about parking that is for special events? Because if we're including special events, as I said in an email to the mayor, we've got two parking lots right here, you guys took our library money and bought that county building and made a parking lot, and on the other side, corner of Seventh and Church, I believe a long time ago, the city bought that lot, demolished the house that was there, and it's labeled parking, but there's nothing that says public parking, private parking, et cetera. And I think between those two, you've probably got at least fifty, sixty spaces, so when you're talking about adding to parking. If you go to Santa Cruz, if I go to an event in Santa Cruz, which I went to back in December, I always go early, because parking is definitely an issue in Santa Cruz, even though they have put up a couple of multi-story parking lots, et cetera, you just never know how long you're going to have to drive around and find a parking space. As I said, we went early, but it was still three blocks away from my event place that we were going to, to find a parking space for the evening. Anyway, I think that there could be additional parking added by changing some of our parallel parking to diagonal, immediately bordering the demonstration garden on Eagleberry, that was changed from parallel to diagonal. I believe the street, although I haven't actually gone out and measured, I've just eyeballed, but that the street going up, going south on Eagleberry past Seventh, that you could change that parallel parking to diagonal, that would add a lot of spaces there. On Monterey between Sixth and Seventh, I know they put in that nature strip, but if you took out that nature strip, you could probably put diagonal parking between Sixth and Seventh, part of Seventh, again, going south on Monterey Street. Over on Railroad, on the east side, from, it would be from Lewis up to Seventh, there is a lot of area there where you could add diagonal parking, and I think this would add a lot of spaces to, you know, help out the situation, and of course, it would be great if signs were added to say that, you know, here's parking, you know, directional, this way you can find public parking. I don't know if the, I know there's been some conversation with the current leadership of the demonstration garden about moving the demonstration garden out to Christmas Hill Park, but I'm wondering if any financial figures have been mentioned as to what that cost would be. I mean, I've heard that the city will help move the garden, but really, all of the irrigation system, et cetera, is in there at the garden now, and you would have to help replace that, plus you would have to fence and fence underneath the ground for, you know, all the ground squirrels out there. So I think there's a lot to be thought of when you think about moving it. Instead, maybe of moving the garden, maybe it could be modified to become more like, and become another city park, because there is no, it's the only greens, real green sprays that we have downtown. Brian Bo commented one time that was a hidden gem. You could take out some of the beds south of the kitchen area, and perhaps put in, you know, like a green field, it could be a soccer field, it could be, you could put in more barbecue things, more benches, it could be a public park area that the public can go to and use in it, the city could use to host events, as we have, as the garden has done in the past for, like, the wine stroll. So again, I don't know what was considered, or what was mentioned in the DBA's survey, but I think that there are a lot of opportunities for adding additional parking that might be even cheaper than trying to, say, move the garden, than just bulldozing it over, et cetera, and going on from there. There was one other place I had for parking, but I can't think of it at the moment. Anyway, so those are my thoughts on the issue, and I hope you'll, and have staff take them into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, anybody else, Suzanne? Gabe, did you have some comments?
Certainly, Mayor and Council, just to address some of the comments raised, the demonstration garden, I'll start there, in meeting with their executive director, they were already hoping to relocate the garden itself from the current location, and they actually wanted to transition away from a demonstration garden to more of a community garden. And so with that in mind, they believe that the Christmas Hill Park location is better suited, because as we all know, Glen Loma is building, and they're going to be building some multifamily projects over there in addition to the housing, so they believe that being closer to residential area may be better suited for those families or individuals that may want to garden, but don't necessarily have the space in their apartment, or where the case may be. So they were already thinking that in that direction, so when we approached them about the possibility of relocating, the timing coincided with what they wanted to do. Also, too, they have, I believe, some plans already laid out, and instead of doing in-ground, I don't know anything about gardening, so forgive me if I don't sound like I know what I'm talking about, but more of a planter style, and actually have sort of above-ground planters that they would assign to the individuals or in the community that would be doing gardening there. So in terms of getting it to the ground, worrying about gophers and such, we have talked to them in offsetting and/or mitigating some of the impacts, is, we already have water service there, is maybe helping with some of the irrigation they would do more to the new community garden. So, points well made, but again, I think just to share with you that the demonstration garden as an organization was already looking to move away from a demonstration garden to a community garden. Now I know why I hadn't sent you the traffic report, because the report was sent directly to my public works director, so I haven't seen it, but I'll track it down from my public works director and forward it to council. The parking, the parking, sorry, the parking study, yeah, I just found John's email that went directly to Groom. With regards to the downtown and impact fees, I've heard from that from some of, from Gary Walt in the past and others, about waiver, reducing and or waiving those. The reason we, I didn't recommend them is because impact fees aren't truly waived or reduced. The NEXIS study, so the impact fees are pursuant to AB sixteen-hundred, so it's legislation that allows you to collect the fees for impacts related to infrastructure as a result of new growth, commercial or residential, and we have to do a NEXIS study that determines what those fees are and what that structure is. So pursuant to AB sixteen-hundred, we have to charge those, so anytime a city waives those or reduces them, the general fund has to backfill those impact fees to, for those impact fees, right, the general fund. And we have an example of that over on the east side of one-oh-one, with some of the commercial businesses there, the big box stores that went in, because that's when the city first implemented this incentive program on the impact fees. And we have an outstanding balance on those, on those, on those fee waivers. So looking at downtown, that would have been the largest and most significant cost to the general fund, because the general fund would have had to backfill that.
And we still have an outstanding balance on that, you said?
We pay on those. So as new, the concept is that as new property tax, sales taxes generated, you're going to use a portion of those monies to pay the impact fees, right? So we have a balance that we're paying back still because of the amount that was given in terms of waivers.
Right, how many years ago was that? That was in the nineties, right?
Yeah.
And we're still paying--
Yeah, we can, I'll have, we'll provide that, it's in our financials.
No, I'm just curious, we're still paying for the benefits that we gave?
Because in the past, the city has actually stopped paying on that. When the general fund, during the recession, they stopped making payments back to those impact fees, so those payments have resumed as the city revenue has gotten better from the recession, it started paying back. Correct. So that's the reason why we didn't, again, consider the impact fee for downtown, because as Mr. Taft is correct, that provides the most significant incentive for the business owner, but it's also the biggest hit to the general fund, right? They will argue that they generate sufficient sales tax from new businesses downtown to offset that, but we've never seen any substantial data to prove that one way or the other. Again, it's not, we can debate it all day long, but I'm sharing with you the reason why I didn't consider that. Also with regards to CEQA, staff recently participated on a telephone call with our consultant, DUDAC, who is doing the citywide historic assessment of our, of our buildings. Couple of things we learned is that because of our historic district, which is between Fourth and Sixth, and then we have the historic overlay that's outside of those boundaries that goes over to, I think, portion of Railroad, Eagleberry, and it actually goes further south than Sixth Street, that any building that, there's three categories, but the one I'm going to talk about is that if there's a third category, that if a building is deemed eligible, meaning eligible to be included on the list of historic register buildings, if it's eligible, that in itself triggers two things, historic review and then potentially CEQA review as well. So that in itself is beyond the city's control, and it's more of a state regulatory issue that we get into because of the existing historic district and the overlay. I have a subsequent follow-up discussion with our consultant to talk about how we, couple of things, how do we reduce that historic overlay? One, two, of those buildings in the eligible column, are they truly eligible, and if so, then how do we get them removed from being eligible to be on that list? That in itself will help streamline some of the revitalization, if we can get them out of that eligible column, because then they won't have to be subject to historic review triggering CEQA review.
Right, and I think I mentioned that during the general plan update committee in the past as well, because I think that we, when we did that overlay, I mean, that overlay goes, what is it, from First, First and Tenth or something? And that hinders the whole corridor.
Correct. And so those are some, so when we looked at, you know, the two options presented to you as part of the facade, Option One is sort of the low-hanging fruit, if you will, and it's able to start making an immediate impact. Option Two is, as I, as we gain more information and working with our consultant, our intention and plan is to bring that back to council for further consideration and discussion, so that we can address that, and you can make some policy discussions. By way of example, when we talk about, you know, something other than a paint job or awning, there was a business involving replacement of windows on their building, and we raised the question of, is there, so they were being told you have to replace it with wood material, the wood frames, everything has to come back with wood material, the property owners pushing back saying, well, why can't, there's other material that looks like it, but it's, you know, maybe fiberglass or something else other than actual wood, because the cost for wood is far more and more expensive. And they couldn't, because that material had to be the same as it was being replaced, right? Nothing we can do, but that was, we went through, I know, I think we consulted with the city attorney's office, we consulted with our CEQA consultant, the historic, and I mean, that's an example of how cumbersome even doing something as simple as replacing windows and how detailed it has to get. So that's what some of the issues we're working through with our consultant, to try to find ways to streamline that process in itself. So those are just some additional information as to why we didn't evaluate some of this further.
I have a question, and maybe John's going to have to come up and help me answer it. I was told by the GDBA that with the historical buildings, the city is holding them to a very high standard, like all new building, and apparently there is a historical, what's the right terminology, a historical code, I guess, so to speak, where since these historic buildings are older, they could actually go into this lower category, and it would be less time-consuming and less expensive, is that right, John?
Well, it's more that the, it allows for alternative approaches to achieve the same objective, so it's just, it's part of the, there's both the federal and--
If I may, there is a historic building code that can be used to apply to historic structures, that's a little different than the current normal building code.
Right.
I think that's what John is referring to.
Right, right.
Right, and that does provide some alternatives that you might not find available through today's NBC code, and that is more, could be more flexible in terms of dealing with some of the improvements, and we're just saying, that's something we think we should look at a little bit, it could really help with some of the historical buildings downtown, you know, because if it's a hundred years old, you know, putting things in there like--
If I may, I believe the architects who get involved in historic preservation are familiar with that, and do try to apply it, because it usually is a cost-saving measure.
Yeah, but I think the point we were trying to make is it's something that should be a little bit more open, some of the people that come in and apply aren't aware of that alternative, and we're just asking that, you know, people be made more aware of that, and maybe we can find something that'll make it easier to get a building retrofitted. That's all we're trying to do, is figure out easiest, cheapest way to get something that is still meets the health and safety requirements from you and the state.
John, I think--
John, I think, I think, um, for, I, I hear you. And, uh, I think that our goal is always to try to find that solution, you know, the cheapest, the fastest. You know, what, what is it that the applicant is looking for? There does seem to be a disconnect right now because I was on the conference call with staff, council. I was on the conference call with staff when we were talking with the consultant. And I left that conference call frustrated because felt like, you know, they're looking, the SEQA consultant is looking at it from their perspective only. Councilmember Marx and I and Councilmember Rocco happened to be at the last URM meeting. And there was a big discussion regarding the building code, the historic building code, and, um, and, and the role of SEQA. And it's that conflict between SEQA and the historic building code that is causing so much frustration. And I still don't totally understand it and get it. Um, but it does seem like the first hurdle that has to get crossed is that SEQA hurdle. Because then the, the consultant puts their stamp of approval on it and off you go. And then, and then becomes an eternal process here at the city about following the codes. As a result of that conference call that we had, uh, next week, we have another conference call with the consultant. So that as Gabe had said, we could try to narrow in exactly on what some of those, um, obstacles are in their evaluation. So that we could figure out if a building is truly historic, then, then it's historic. But if it's some sort of gray area, then let's talk about that and figure out what has to go, has to be able to move forward and what, um, what doesn't. So I think that's kind of where we're, we're stuck right now. And I'm looking forward to a better understanding of, of the historic building code and SEQA and how we could push it all forward.
Go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think part of the problem is that historic preservation is a valuable goal that I think cities agree with in general. But it's gotten folded into the SEQA process. It doesn't really belong in SEQA, if you think about it. It's not trees, it's not wildlife, it's not water conservation. It's really something quite different. But the state has folded it into the SEQA process. And so it's become subject to these very complex SEQA rules. And there was a horrible case, which I mentioned to the council once before, a couple of years ago. It came out of Fresno where the city council had done a historic inventory and decided that a certain building was not historic. Then they did an EIR a year later about a, a project that would have demolished that building. And the city council said, well, we've just decided it's not historic. What's the problem? They were sued on the adequacy of their environmental analysis. And a court said, even though you decided that the building was not historic, for SEQA purposes, there might be a historic impact anyway. And you have to look at it again with that in mind, whatever that means. So I think as a result of cases like that, people, consultants are very, um, concerned about this aspect. Because the rules have gotten to be much stricter than they really should be for historic preservation. And that's why we always worry about SEQA because there are cases like that and courts that interpret it very strictly to fold historic preservation in with other kinds of environmental impacts.
I was going to say that as part of the, you know, being able to look at exemptions and things. One of the things you have to be very careful about is that it does not create an adverse consequence relative to the historic nature.
That's correct. That's an exception to the exemptions, although what you say in your, in your summary is basically correct.
Yeah. So what, what does it, what, Andy, what does it mean though as far as, uh, city liability? If a, if a SEQA consultant is willing to put their stamp of approval, if you will, on, on, on the particular design of a building that then comes back to the city for approval of a neg dac or mitigated neg dac. Um, does, does that insulate the council any?
Yeah, in general, if you think about it, for, say, a facade restoration of some sort, the requirement if the building is historic is that the facade restoration continue the historicity of the building. And so be consistent with the way it was built and so on and how it looks. And so typically the way that would be certified, if you will, would be by a consultant or historic architect would say that. The city can then rely upon that. Now, somebody can file a lawsuit and hire an expert and say something different. But there's no real liability to the city other than the possibility of ending up in some kind of strange SEQA lawsuit, which would be unlikely if you have a consultant report saying, in my opinion, these changes are not significant historically.
Right, okay.
So that would be an approach. And if we had, if we had a program like this, part of the program would be, I think, to require that the proposed changes be vetted by a historic architect or consultant who would say that.
And I think that's our end goal right now. What Gabe and I are, are working on is trying to figure out with this consultant, that's the purpose of next week's phone call, is how can we get to the point that you just made right now?
Right. And consultants do that. I mean, that's one of the things they do for a living is historic.
But I would like to add though that i- in regards to this, just take a step back. Well, what Gabe was also mentioning was that overlay. Because what you're talking about are buildings that are already identified or potentially identified as historic buildings. But not all the buildings between first and tenth street are that way. So it's us that can make the policy not to have an overlay. Not necessarily SEQA or something. That has to do with the individual buildings that you're talking about. And I'm saying that we should, it would be helpful to the downtown businesses if we, if we got information about what would it take to get rid of that overlay.
So, I mean, intuitively, I would think we could get it done through the new general plan update, right?
That takes forever.
Well, that takes forever. I don't know if there's an intermediate step that we could take other than.
I think you could do it through the new general plan because if somebody challenges it, the, the courts would say, well, you have to do environmental review if you're getting rid of historic overlay zone because that may lead to demolition of buildings that could have been historic. Yeah. Well, I mean, it, when these surveys were done in the nineteen eighties and nineties, you know, it seemed like a good idea. And it is a good idea in some sense. However, it can be applied in a way that makes it very difficult to do renovations or to knock down buildings that are very marginally historic. But we've run into this in, in all, you know, all over in San Jose and elsewhere. And it's a, it's kind of a trap unfortunately. But in the new general plan, uh, an actual interesting concept would be to narrow the concept, the scope of the historic zone, which you could do.
All right. And Kat, that's why I keep asking, let's get started on the specific plan for downtown. Because we can start that before we get back into the general plan. The other thing, only other comment I'll make and then I'll get back down. Uh, you guys, in your report, Gabe, you recommended that we standardize the facades and you have an architect do all of that. I would be worried about that in terms of, again, the adverse impact on historic, on the historic buildings. Because you're, you're changing the facade effectively. I think we probably need to keep it more per building and just set a design standard into the general plan that addresses what the city would like them to look like. I would be concerned about saying every one of them is going to follow this architectural plan.
Okay. Yeah, I actually, so, so thank you, John. Um, okay, I have a few questions for staff and Gabe or Trevin or Sue. I don't know who's, who would answer, yeah. Uh, with regards to the pilot program itself and option one, um, option one was the fifty thousand dollars, right? To get it going. Um, when, obviously that gets approved in the June budget and it's a one-year pilot. When do you think we could actually have the policy in place?
This would be for next fiscal year.
No, I understand that, but I'm assuming there's going to be a lag time or some sort of built-in time. Um, is this something we could start now to bring back in June for adoption? So that come July one, we're off and running?
Yeah, the, the program, our goal would be to make it fiscal year tied into the budget. So along with the appropriation for fifty thousand would also be the program criteria, the, the application process, if you will, for you to adopt the actual program and then appropriate the fifty thousand, thus making it effective July one.
Okay, perfect. I just didn't want to allocate fifty thousand and then in September, we're reviewing a policy. Okay, good enough. Um, and then, um, Gabe, with regards to the opportunity zone, uh, I know the downtown association, uh, John and, and Gary and, and, uh, the EDC director, um, who, uh, went to Salinas last week or two weeks ago. They're working on it now. Is there any city role? Is there anything that the city has to do? Do you know?
Not that I'm aware of. I need to go back and refresh my, my, my recollection of the program itself. But, um, in terms of any obligation of the public entity to do with the opportunity zone, no. A lot of cities are doing the marketing of it, as, uh, Mr. Taft just described, uh, of those opportunity zones. What we would, how we would partner is again, looking at opportunity zone projects being streamlined and reducing those timelines wherever possible. And, I mean, and that, that would be a role. But in terms of any obligation as part of the designation, no.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if there was something that, that the council needed to review or if there was a resolution that we needed to pass or anything like that.
That was a, a state designation that designated those two census tracts.
But we were also planning to discuss it at the general plan update. Or we already did, I can't remember now. We'd have to ask, follow up. But I remember talking about opportunity zones in the general plan update.
Yeah, my, my question was specifically, I mean, Tammy's not here, but, I mean, I know she's been working on it. And, um, along with downtown folks, I just wasn't sure if there was a, a specific city role that we had to do something, you know? So that's all I was looking at. Okay, and then on, uh, Trevin, you mentioned, um, a competitive process. What did you, that the applicants could be evaluated on a competitive process? What did you envision there?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is because there would be limited funding.
Okay, I need you to speak up a little bit more.
Sorry. This would be, uh, in, because there's limited funding. So let's say we do the minor option one and we only have fifty thousand. So if we have twenty businesses competing for that fifty thousand, we'd want to make sure it goes into the businesses that are of a strategic importance to the city.
Okay, let's use your example. You have twenty businesses stepping forward, say, we want to use this thing. And I would love that, right?
Right.
The reality though is I'm not sure you're going to get twenty businesses stepping up right away. I might show up on day five and Councilmember Tucker might show up on day twelve. Are you going to hold up my application so that it competes with Councilmember Tucker's?
So this is an option for council to consider. So if it was important to make sure that an applicant wasn't held up at all, then we wouldn't have to go through with a competitive process. And the competitive process would look like an RFP where we say, hey, there's grant funding available and we'd make the applicants respond within two weeks. So if you didn't want to do that, we could say maybe one week. And that way we have people, uh, going through the pipeline much faster to make sure that there's a, a consistent streamline of, uh, grant money being approved.
Hmm, okay. So if, um, okay, I didn't get that in the staff report, that that's what you were envisioning is kind of saying, you know, here's, here's this money, everybody that wants to apply for it, come forward and, um, and compete, if you will, for this money. I thought you were just saying, here's a program, anybody that wants to come forward, you know? Uh, and as long as you meet that criteria, you're good to go. And as Councilmember Marx said, or the question she was asking is, it's on a reimbursement basis. So, so they have to go out, do the work and then come to the city and apply for the reimbursement. So are you saying then that the council has a choice, which way we want to proceed with that?
The council can provide direction on that, on that matter.
Okay, great. Um, and then, um.
So just remind me while you're looking for your notes, Mayor. The program itself and the criteria will still come back to council for input. So we'll, we'll put it together, draft it, and then as part of that consideration for you to appropriate the money, you'll have an opportunity to provide input into the selection process of the program itself.
Into the selection, into what type of process we want to see? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, to, 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 okay. And then council, as, uh, you'll see here that the recommendation was for option one. Personally, I think option two is really good. Option one, I think, is a good start. Um, but, uh, as we've been talking, um. I'm, I'm on facades right now. So option one would include such things as paint, art, signage and awnings, right? Uh, that's fifty thousand dollars from the general fund. Uh, staff would come to, back to us on, um.
But it could be both. I mean.
No, 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 hang on, hang on. Councilmember Blankley's having a heart attack over there. What, what's, what's going on?
Trying to follow what you're saying. You said that staff is recommending option one?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't get that from the report. I thought we were being, we were being asked whether or not we want them to pursue option one and option two. So, okay, so that's what I was asking was where.
If you take a look at, um, next steps at the bottom of page ten.
Okay, I'm there.
Okay, it says, provide direction with drafting a one-time request for inclusion in next budget in the amount of fifty thousand. We'll support option one.
I see that.
What's not included.
Is anything for option two?
That's correct.
Well, that doesn't mean we couldn't choose to do option two at a later date.
I know. He was just saying the staff's recommendation was not to do option two.
All I'm saying right now is option one is the fifty thousand dollars for, um, the facade pilot. Option two is what we've been talking about with regards to SEQA. I think we'll have a better idea of how to proceed with option two once, uh, staff and I have a conversation with our historical consultant. Because that's where all the SEQA stuff comes into play. So, I mean, there's, there's nothing really to do with option two right now.
Mayor, can I, can I ask a follow-up question? Maybe to Gabe or, um, just sort of off of what the mayor's saying. So option one is more of, let's get things moving. Option two, sort of, there's going to be a time delay basically before anything really gets done. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong here, um, is there a way we can do a combination of both? Because I would like to see us move on this. Um, and I don't know how that would sort of, you know, the formula would be, but I, I want to see some momentum here now. If we, again, I understand option two, I really do, I like it. But that's just going to delay this process quite a bit. Am I right?
If I can, yes.
Councilmember, total American Council, um, option two is going to require, um, a lot more work still.
Right, right.
We still have to work, obviously with our legal counsel. Um, we have to have further discussion with our consultant to find a way how we can be able to build on that in terms of the overlay, how do we reduce that, that, that area? And then the number of buildings of which ones are truly historic, which ones are on the eligible list. Because that's where we start getting into Councilmember Tucker's point. Not every building downtown or the overlay is historic. But because they're deemed eligible, meaning eligible to be put on the historic register, that in itself triggers some of this environmental SEQA and historic review. So that's the follow-up discussion we're going to have with our consultant.
Right.
And looking at, can we legally somehow remove these buildings out of that eligible column? And two, can we reduce that overlay as part of that as well? And so those are still the additional discussions I need to have with staff. So I can tell you that in the next few months with the budget going on and then, you know, a lot more work with that. I, I just don't know that that's something realistically for us to be able to commit to that.
So help me answer my, my question here. So option one, like I said, it, it, there's some momentum right away. But in reality, option two in the long haul may be better, we may be better off with option two. I mean, eventually there may be more, more improvements done with option two, option two. Am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, if you're looking at, just take any building, you know, particular building downtown. If you're talking about option one, you're talking about putting it simply, you know, lipstick on a pig.
Right.
You know?
Right.
Versus option two, you really get into the reconstruction of the frontage of the building too, where you're really making real improvements to the, to the building itself, right? And then it comes into how much triggers, you know, how much of that reconstruction are you proposing? Is it going to stay consistent? And all of that then triggers other.
Right. And I, and I thank you for that because, again, I see it as optional. Right, and I, and I thank you for that. Cause again, I see it as option one, yeah, we're just going to put lipstick on it. And six months, a year from now, it's going to need more improvements. Where in option two, we may be able to do improvements over the long haul.
Well, in option one, you're just trying to market the downtown to investors. What I would like the council to really think about with option two is it's a lot more money. I mean, we do get a good bang for our buck. However, if we were to contribute 50 to 100,000 into option two for a business owner, we have to consider, is that business owner going to be someone who's going to be around for a while? Because we could spend the money. He's gone in six, seven months because his business failed. That's a big loss. So that's going to take a lot of further conversation to say, who is going to be eligible, you know, for this? Is it someone who we think is going to stick around for a while? But I mean, both are good options. They have their, you know, their good and bad points. But you know, option one is that real quick fix that we're looking for right now. And maybe we would get some investors coming in who would do option two all on their own and not depend on the city. I don't know. Further discussion?
Okay, so um, then um, with regards to. Councilmember Blankley raised a question regarding the nonprofit buildings. I saw that and I'm not entirely sure, and I think that's kind of a council discussion. Is that, is that something we want to, to allow in the, with regards to a fee waiver? Nonprofits certainly, I think the world of them. They, they do good work. Um, but is that who we want to target for the downtown? That's my question.
No, I don't think so. We want money. I mean, we want, that sounds so greedy, but we do. Uh, we want sales tax, we want revenue, we want foot traffic that's going to contribute to other businesses down here. And I don't see that happening with, with nonprofits.
I, I concur. And like I said, they do, they do really good work. I'm just not sure if it comes to the downtown, if that's who we want to focus that reduction on. Okay, and is that, I'm kind of getting some agreement from the council. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then with regards to, oh, I think that was it. I think that was my last one. Councilmember, please queue up if you want to speak. Councilmember Blankley.
Yes, okay. I want, I have a question on option, well, first let me say, since, since you were just about the 100%. My personal feeling is that when it comes to the reduction of whatever we called it, the corridor thing. And we were talking about the reduction of processing fees up to 75%. My personal opinion is we shouldn't go beyond that in, in any case. Whenever you do 100%, nobody has the, the piece in. I just think 75% should be the max, however we go forward with that. Um, on regarding, option one, easy, understood, got that. Option two, I have two, two comments there. One is that, I mean, however we go forward with that, it's a substantial amount of money that the city is basically putting in, the city. And the city is the people, all the people, that are putting in a substantial amount of money to an individual person's property. That's contributing to the value of that individual person's property. So we need to be careful there. The motive, of course, is to spur business and, and things like that. I tend to think that dealing with the SEQA side of things, the EIR, architectural stuff, if we take that off the plate, that's enough. I don't know that we need to then also be putting in cash on top of those things. We'll see where this goes, but my personal feeling is that that's plenty of an incentive if somebody is serious about a business downtown, to take those government things off their table. And it's easier since the city is the one that has to deal with that stuff anyway, to get it all passed and done. And then the city can take on whether or not something does or does not need SEQA, whether or not something does or does not need a certain architectural design because of where it is and the historical nature and that sort of thing. My, I have a question though, Gabe. When you were talking about um, the SEQA side of this option two, because I'm looking at the numbers. So in just this example in the report, $500,000 is an example to be allocated to option two, of which 100,000 would go towards this SEQA and architectural stuff, correct? And the other 400,000 was supposed to be for the $40,000 times 10 potential applicants, right? That's how the numbers work out? So if 100,000, if, if you were thinking 100,000 for up to 10 applicants, does that mean you're thinking it would cost the city only 10, oh, I say only because the numbers seem to be so big to me usually, $10,000 each to do all the SEQA and the EIRs and the architect stuff?
The, remind me here, Trevin, he, he did the calculations on that. Let me have him. His, his memory, he still remembers more than mine.
Thank you, Gabe, and good question. So the, the, the budget figure that we were anticipating, and you're asking for option two?
I'm asking about option two.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
That's the only one that has this, isn't it?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, so it would be approximately 100,000 for just the SEQA and EIR and historical and architectural. That was envisioned to be one overarching encompassing EIR. So the city would hire one consultant to conduct that. And it would include each of the individuals' applicants under that review. That was the, that was the.
I see.
That was the strategy. And by doing one and having one consultant do all of them, you get a streamlined effect.
I do remember that in the report. That was in there. Yeah, you said that.
So we're, we're looking at, just to make sure the numbers are right, because I thought I heard you say 500,000.
Yes.
The report says 350. Where, where did we get the 500,000?
Right here. It says 350.
Uh, maybe, was it in your presentation here? In your, in your slideshow?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at page nine of the packet and we talked about 350 from the general fund, with 250 going to the grant award and EIR 50,000 and drawings 50,000.
You're looking at the report.
I'm looking at the report.
Right, so I think the slideshow said something different then.
Oh, did it?
You're correct. The slideshow is incorrect.
Okay, okay. So, so never mind the slideshow numbers. Instead it was 350 and, and 150?
And 100,000 for the environmental.
Okay, so that didn't change. It's still the 100,000.
Right, with 250 going for the grant. I think your point though, that you're making is correct. Because if, and Gabe and I had talked about this, if the city is willing to take this on, then one would be able to argue that this is the city's contribution for the downtown, which is targeting a one-block or two-block area that would streamline that environmental process, not just for one property owner, but for all those buildings that have been deemed historical. Now, now that EIR is off the table for that applicant coming in.
Exactly, which should be huge.
Which is huge. It's, I mean, it's holding up, it's holding up uh, the water store downtown. It was, it's holding up Dick Brunns right now.
Right.
Um, it's holding up a bunch of other buildings. So yeah, you're absolutely right. What they're saying is, and we don't have to make a decision tonight on it, is if we do all the environmental work, do we also want to include potentially 350,000 or maybe up to 250,000 in cash incentives?
Right, and I would say no. I was just trying to understand if the 100 going to SEQA stuff was enough. But now I understand that it would be because it's a whole, it's all one.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, council, so uh.
Can we take them one by one and, and?
Sure. Um, so we have, we've received the report and provided direct to staff on several economic development activities, including downtown, facade pilot, and conceptual corridor. Uh, with regards to the downtown parking uh, area, how, let me get back to here. How do you guys want to handle that?
Page are we on there?
That would be on uh.
Uh, page six is the next steps.
That's what I mean, next steps.
Yeah, it starts on page four and ends on page six. So what Gabe is asking for there is to have the money allocated uh, into the CIP budget, which is the capital improvement program. And um, it would be looking at predominantly that area behind the art center. There was a lot of discussion, well, there, the, the staff report addressed what council was requesting last time, which was the um, looking at the possibility of putting solar panels out there. And the staff report I thought was really technical. But um, it, I think what it basically came down to is that, given the size of that particular parcel, there would have to be further analysis as to whether or not it even made financial sense. Does that pretty much, and um, and so what I would like to see is us move forward with including that property as, as part of the capital improvement program and um, and, and setting aside the use of that property as potential solar for now. Does that, does everybody agree to that?
Right, but I, I really am concerned about this cost. So how will staff come to a much more finite number than, especially if we're getting people saying it should be lower?
I think that's a legitimate question. And if you guys all went back to the previous report on parking, um, you'll see how much Morgan Hill and Hollister actually paid for, per parking space for, for their stuff. So by contrast, this seems like a bargain. However, what we have heard is that um, that there is a possibility that this might be high. And so, you know, I, I would assume that at some point, staff would have to value engineer this and really drill down on how much it's going to cost.
So just really quick on that. Just to be clear, we've not, other than experience-based estimates, we've not ran any calculations on this, on any, on the cost. Exactly, it's a wag, it's a wag, exactly.
No idea.
And that's why we looked at comparison to Morgan Hill and Hollister just to give us a ballpark figure of what they paid for parking at their, you know, parking facility. But we have not, just to be clear, my staff has not done any calculations, estimates, or takeoffs on the cost. So this is just a range of what we believe based on experience in comparison to other cities.
And what would this parking lot, when you're in this range, when you, when you envision this parking lot, open-air parking lot, what do you see there? You see tar, you see stripes, do you see streetlights, lamps? Is it lit? What do you see?
Yeah, this is a.
There's no walls, right?
Right, this would be a parking, open parking structure with asphalt, striping, lighting throughout. You know, that's what we're talking about.
Lighting throughout, no, no gates, no things?
No, nothing like that.
It would be a public parking lot.
Right, okay.
And could you, um, I'm fine with this, but could you, I like the suggestion of changing some of the streets to diagonal parking. What would it take to do that? I don't think it would take all that much. I mean, measurement and engineering, yeah. But once that is, it's just changing some striping.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of the area.
I mean, to, to, even if it adds, you know, 20 more spots, it's still more than what we have.
So mostly on, well downtown, it's all diagonal. Um.
But we're talking Eagleberry, right?
Eagleberry, most of it, you got, yeah, one side is. Um, so engineer would have to look at, you know, how much space do you have for one car to back up the other? That's what we have monitoring.
Gabe, actually, I want to piggyback off Councilwoman Blankley's question. Obviously, um, safety is probably the most important piece of any parking lot that we decide, if we decide to move forward. But the question she asked, if there was going to be a gate, my concern is that that ends up being a lot that's open 24/7 and people are just leaving their cars there for, you know, for days, if not weeks. Obviously, that's something we're going to need to discuss as well, make sure we monitor that and that doesn't happen, where it ends up being a parking lot for, you know, cars that nobody uses.
Well, so that's actually, Councilmember, one of the things that I want to talk about is, Gabe, what, what would it take for us to do or ask the downtown business association to maybe kick off as a downtown parking management plan? How do we, how do we kick that off? Is that a topic for Friday? Is it a topic for tonight? Is it a topic for sometime down the road?
No, definitely. It's a topic for Friday that you're going to be prioritizing in our workload. So, you know, given the directives you, you've provided to me up till now in our capacity, it's that discussion of where does this fit in your, in your, your council priorities for my staff and I to work on.
Okay, okay. Um, all right. Well, I'd like to find out if, if that's something that could, that has to be city-initiated and city-driven. Or maybe we get the framework from, from some, a group like the downtown business association that maybe they take the lead on it, provide some information that staff then reviews and.
It's that one.
On the parking management plan?
Well, it would have to be the city because it's city property. And the police department's the only one that can order a vehicle towed out of there.
Well, I think, yeah, but what I'm getting at is if they took the lead on it, and I, I don't know if this is the case or not, but all I'm saying is, if they took the lead on it and were responsible for it, they could do the analysis, or they could do the review of it, establish the framework of it, and then bring it back to the city for our review and comment so that things like what you're saying.
We've done that several times.
Have we?
All we got to do is tell the police chief to start enforcing it. And it's taken care of, problem solved, instead of looking at it again.
I don't, when would?
It will cause people.
You might not have the manpower to do it, because we did it at one time and it worked really well. But the downtown association got upset about it because people were getting tickets. And then all of a sudden, the police department stopped doing it.
Oh, they were upset because of the enforcement?
Yes, yes.
All right. Okay, well, let's uh, we'll talk about that on Friday then. Okay, um, all right, so can, with regards to downtown, are we, the downtown parking, are we okay with including it? Yes?
Yes.
All right. Um, and then with regards to the facade pilot program, are we okay with, with jump-starting this with option one? And we'll have to come back later regarding next steps for option two. Is that correct?
I'm good with option one.
Yeah, I'm good with option one. But I really would want, if we take out the cash aspect of it, what, what would it take? So maybe when Gabe has time to come back to us on option two. If we're just saying the SEQA portion, what, how much effort is that on staff's time to do that? So just when you have time, come back to us.
I'm sorry, say that again. On option two, do what now?
As well as option one, when, if we're, if we're in agreement to just doing the SEQA work and not any of the other suggestions of the cash money and, because if you have cash money and you have to manage it and you have to do all these things. But if we take some of those other things off the table, would it really take that long? That's all I want him to, if the answer is yes, okay, then we till next year or something. But maybe the answer is not that hard.
Yeah. Do you want to comment?
No, I just want to get clarification. When you're talking about SEQA, you're referring to?
Option two.
Option two and what it would take to consult our SEQA. Well, none of my staff does environmental work. We review, but we contract out our environmental work.
So then we need the cost of that is what you're saying as well?
I'm understanding the question, right. If we're talking about option two in terms of, and, and that's the, the follow-up discussion that we're going to have with the consultant Doodak, who's doing that work, is looking at that SEQA component and possibly, once we have that, is get some cost of what's associated with looking at um, the SEQA work and how do we get some of these buildings off the eligible list?
All right, so are we okay then with option one? Yeah, all right. And then moving forward, the conceptual, uh, commercial corridor development incentive program. Uh, that uh. That is the 75% reduction in fees. We heard uh, Councilmember Blankley say it should be no more than 75% so that, uh, so that the applicant has some sort of buy-in into the, into the game. I think those were her sentiments, right?
Yeah.
And, and the removal of the nonprofit uh, building for the downtown area. Is that accurate? Okay. All right, Gabe, did you have any questions on that?
Just remembering council, so, just for, again, clarification, when we say it, a max, no, no more than seventy-five percent, are, are you asking us to put a range to look at, like fifty percent? Or just make it at seventy-five percent?
Seventy-five.
Okay, thank you.
Gabe, let me ask this, or, let me answer this question regarding the seventy-five. Obviously, seventy-five and a hundred are close, but I mean, wouldn't, would not increase it, or not putting a limit to the, or seventy-five, um, encourage more businesses, you know? I mean, seventy-five is a lot, I, I get that, but, you know, I, I, over the last couple of years, we've talked about being very, very aggressive in, in reducing fees, whatever it may be. Wouldn't, shouldn't we stay open-minded in, in case seventy-five isn't what triggers people to want to come downtown?
So, you're thinking of maybe a hundred percent or ninety percent, or?
I'm thinking whatever's going to get people downtown, if it's seventy-five, it's, if it's ninety, if it's a hundred, I, I would, I would be open to that.
So, you bring up a good point, however, I believe in skin in the game. Because, because many times when you give someone something free, it doesn't matter to them.
Right.
And are they really going to appreciate it that much and work that hard? I think seventy-five percent's extremely generous. I would be more apt to say fifty percent, but I would certainly not, you know, stall it. If everyone else wants seventy-five percent, I would go along with you. But, um...
No, no, I, 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 I respect that, no, I understand, and seventy-five is very generous. I just wanted to have that further discussion.
I just believe there has to be skin in the game.
Councilmember LaRomenos.
So, Councilmember Tovar, I think you're asking a larger question, which is, based on the amount of money that the city is putting in, or essentially putting in. As a result of that, is there a way to later determine, or to check, to see if that's triggering the right response that we're looking for? So, I think the question then might flow from that. Gabe, are we limiting ourselves in any way? Or will there, let me, let me restate that. Is there a way to check at a future time and revise some of these numbers if we find we're not getting the interest from the, uh, from the developers that we were hoping for?
I think this is a pilot program, so I think that information's going to come back to us at the end.
Then there we go.
Yeah.
Thank you, all right.
Mayor Hammack?
Yes.
Uh, San Jose has instituted various programs like this, and they typically couple it with a requirement that the work be done by a certain time, that building permits be pulled, or CBO, or something.
I agree with that.
In order to, to see, so the program just doesn't drag on indefinitely?
And, and staff has talked about putting those kind of clocks into the, this, okay, councilmember?
And while seventy-five percent might seem high, you know, you were talking, sorry, maybe going lower, it's, it's really, it, to my mind, it's not that high when you consider that it's only applying to planning, building, and engineering fees. It's not applying to impact fees, those bigger things like that. So, it's, it's generous, but it's good, it's enough. It should, it's an incentive, which is what we want, what we're trying to do, and it should be a sufficient incentive, in my opinion.
Yeah. And finally, you know, this is an incentive for property owners to make improvements to their buildings. It's really up to them to try to drive those people downtown for, uh, for, for, uh, their business. Okay, so, are we okay with the seventy, or, excuse me, the conceptual commercial corridor development incentive program?
Just, if I
Yeah.
Just for, uh, to be clear, we've couched both the facade program and the incentive program as pilot programs, so I just want to confirm that. We're proposing a one-year program for both, effective July one, for us to be able to measure for the fiscal year from July one to June thirtieth.
Oh, wait, 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 I'm sorry, which ones?
The facade.
The, the facade and
And the corridor development incentive program.
Yeah.
And it, to start, um, July first, not retroactive in the back if somebody's already in, in the pipeline.
Yeah, we don't want to get into like the state doesn't put a clear, it's not retroactivity, correct?
Okay.
Mayor, question, so, well, the current discussion, it's, it's two parts. It's, it's a seventy-five percent, and it's also then the nonprofit, correct?
Excluding.
Excluding the nonprofit.
Right, no, no, I, I know, I'm, I'm just saying that we're talking about excluding nonprofits from downtown. So, that's sort of part
No, 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 we're not, we're not saying excluding them from downtown. We're saying excluding the nonprofit from taking advantage of the corridor, commercial corridor program.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
Is that accurate? Am I capturing what the council wanted?
That's what I
Okay. Wanted to make sure, thank you.
All right. Okay, Gabe, are you clear on the direction?
Not to beat the dead horse, so, in our staff report, we said some, that up to a hundred percent could be for buildings forty plu, that are forty-plus years old, buildings and suites vacant for longer than a hundred and eighty days, or for nonprofit building projects. So, just to be clear, is they're not, or scratching all this, that none of these are eligible up to a hundred percent? And, and, so even if it's a nonprofit, it could still be eligible for seventy-five percent?
No.
No? Okay, that's what I'm trying to get clarification here. Nothing for nonprofits, okay, all right.
Nonprofit is removed, and we're saying seventy-five percent.
Max.
Right, and I just, mayor, that's what I was trying to ask, so it's, it's, it's two parts. I mean, we're excluding the nonprofit from being able to be eligible for the seventy-five percent.
Yes.
Correct. So, if, if we may, I, because I, me personally, I'm not in favor of excluding the nonprofits from the seventy-five percent. So, that's why I'm asking if we can do it two separate, um, two separate votes on this one here.
Oh, two separate votes?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so, uh, with regard, and, and these are not, let me jump ahead of Andy here, these are not formal votes. This is not a motion, okay? But by a thumbs up or thumbs down, with regards to, uh, reducing the fee amount to seventy, uh, what is it, what am I trying to say, seventy-five percent? By seventy-five percent, uh, can I get a thumbs up? Or down? For, yes, the commercial corridor, okay. Now, with regards to, so that passes, all right? Now, with regards to striking out the nonprofit building projects from, from, uh, the criteria or the list.
Can we, can we, can you be really super clear and, and point to the page and maybe the item number? So, it's absolutely clear.
It is on page twelve.
Okay.
Wouldn't a nonprofit have to own the building for this to apply?
No, this is all for business coming into downtown.
Businesses.
Leasing, okay, they could lease it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so this is, yeah, so to Councilmember Tovar's point, this is, if you're trying to attract, this is to attract certain things downtown, if you're trying to attract nonprofits downtown, then you would do what you're suggesting.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's right, because if we, if we give direction, and again, I want to also make sure I'm clear, if we do, give direction, we say thumbs up, then we're saying that the nonprofit would not be eligible for this.
Right.
That's my concern.
My, my rationale is, um, that, again, I think nonprofits do a good job. I want to see them be successful. However, I don't know if I want to have this kind of incentive for the downtown corridor, where we're trying to attract businesses.
No, and, and I respect that, no, I understand, and I respect that. But for me, it goes back to your initial comments about the services that they provide for our citizens, so
Okay, so now, with regard, I think you wanted a separate vote on this, councilmember. So, with regards to the nonprofit building projects and, and excluding that, uh, from the commercial corridor, can I get a thumbs up or thumbs down? Okay, and that passes on a six to one.
We were looking at what paragraph it was.
It's all right. I'll run into you downtown.
Okay, so, we're done with this, we've, we've kicked this horse, all right. Moving on, report on an issue